Welcome to today's Southeast Express Coffee Connect Panel Conversation. It's our District 4 Forum. Thank you so much for joining us. I'm Amy Sweet. I'm the publisher and executive editor of the Southeast Express, the Colorado Springs Indy, the Colorado Springs Business Journal, and the Colorado Springs Military Newspaper Group. The Southeast Express is a nonprofit newspaper of the southeast quadrant of Colorado Springs. The paper is the newest addition to the Colorado Publishing House, and it's powered by the technical and logistical support of all of our other papers. I want to thank KOAA and their team for sponsoring tonight's, today's event and helping to elevate the southeast community. We also want to thank our other media partner, My Black Colorado, as well as the Chinook Center for the space to host today's candidate forum for District 4. I would now like to introduce one of our moderators, Patrice Ravenscroft, who currently serves as the Chief Operating Officer for 6035 Charities and Associate Publisher for the Express. Thank you, Patrice.
Thank you, Amy, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to our District 4 candidates, Regina English and Councilmember Yolanda Avila, as well as Allison Zimrin, KOAA Multimedia Journalist and Anchor. Allison, thank you for being here this afternoon for the forum to co-moderate with me, and thank you to the KOAA team for their work on this forum.
And thank you so much for having me, Patrice. And it's, we're, of course, as you can see, all socially distant out here. I feel like I should be applauding in between some of these, but it's, you know, it's the world we live in that we've been doing for the last year. And of course, a big thank you to both of our City Council Candidates Panel members here today. I'm going to go ahead and get started with some introductions. Yolanda Avila serves as City Council Member for District 4 for Colorado Springs and, of course, serves as a Colorado Springs Utility Board Director. Now, while she's served District 4, she's focused on improving transit accessibility, fixed bus routes, and frequency among many other District 4 projects. Avila is a resident leader of the RISE, Resilient, Inspired, Strong, and Engaged is what that stands for, RISE Southeast Coalition, which sponsors activities for projects in the southeast and is currently spearheading the Panorama Park Initiative.
And we have our Regina English, who currently represents our county as Ms. El Paso County and also holds Ms. Colorado Ambassador 2019 State Title. She is the founder and director of the BU, a nonprofit organization that mentors youth focused on education, public speaking, community service, team building, and healthy relationships. Regina is the resident leader for the RISE Coalition and a School Board Vice President for Harrison School District 2 and now running for City Council District 4.
All right, and again, thank you both so much for your time this morning. This is, of course, a big help to all of the voters out there to get to know you both a little bit better. So here's how we're going to do this. We're going to start out with both candidates doing some opening remarks, and then we're going to ask each candidate a series of questions ranging on all different topics, and then you'll both have the opportunity to do some closing statements as well for our audience watching. And candidates will have about two minutes per question. We are going to start with Yolanda, though, and have you do your three-minute introduction for us.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Yolanda Avila, and it's such a pleasure to be here in my district. I just grew up like five blocks down east of this area here at Chinook Center. And I'm so grateful for the Chinook Center to be sponsoring this along with My Black Colorado, KOAA, and especially the Southeast Express. That is so great. So when I grew up here, I grew up here, I had, I was a young bride, had my children here, and we lived in Deerfield Hills, we lived in southeast, Southborough, Eastborough, Pikes Peak Park, went to the different schools here. This has been my place, but I went through schools all the way from elementary school through junior high to Mitchell High School and then to Pikes Peak Community College and to Colorado College. This is my place, including not just southeast, but downtown, Garden of the Gods, the entire city. I had a really great upbringing here, but as I went to Colorado College, I graduated, and there were no jobs, there were no jobs here. So I made my way to California, to make a long story short, and became a criminal defense investigator. And during that time, I got the job of my dreams. I loved it. I was also, as a defense investigator, I was mentoring 200 university students from the local university, UCLA, Chapman, Irvine, UC Irvine, and the like. During my tenure there, which I love doing, I was diagnosed with a retinitis pigmentosa, which is the diagnosis is retinitis pigmentosa, but the prognosis is complete blindness. And at that time, I had to transition over to driving my car to public transportation. And that transition was a lot easier because buses were passing every 15, 20 minutes, and every sidewalk was walkable and ADA-approved. Then I came home, back home here to Colorado Springs and my district and to be near my mom, who was going to turn 90. I bought a house that was just a few blocks from her so that I could go see her anytime I wanted, but I was appalled. A third of the city lights were out. If the sidewalks existed, they weren't walkable. The buses only ran Monday through Friday. And so I got to work right away and join different organizations and committees and said, "We'd have to do something about this." And so within a few years, buses were running seven days a week, three evening routes, and we were increasing frequencies. So after that, I thought, "Well, it's, you know, if I can do this, I can make other things happen." And so I immediately started to run for City Council and wanted to fix infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, our sidewalks. I want to make sure we got our fair share and also economic development, and that's why I am running today. Thank you.
Yolanda, thank you. And now it's something's over to Regina for your introduction. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, everyone, that played a role in creating this space for us to come and share. I'm a woman of many words, but I'll keep it few today because we only have a few minutes. But District 4 is certainly in a pivotal moment at the time and energy that's going. I'm here to make sure that my constituents have a better quality of life, just as those throughout the rest of the city. There has been some phenomenal work done. We're experiencing a tremendous amount of growth. Yolanda has done some fantastic work. Thank you, Yolanda, for your work, but the work is always bigger than one person, and I am here to help Yolanda because this is a big job. The things that we're facing, I'm completely aware of what we're facing. It's going to take an objective thinker. It's going to take a new energy to propel District 4 to that next level of greatness. And I'm here with a clear understanding of the role that I am stepping in. I hear my community. I understand my community because I am community. And throughout this conversation, we can go more in depth about the things that are happening and the things that are really important in our district because we know that infrastructure is a huge, huge task that's bigger than one person. We need a robust public transportation system. Got it? We're going to get it. We need more affordable housing because clearly there's a lack of, as we can see, many initiatives have popped up across the city. So we all know that we're in this work together and that this is a collaborative work, and it's about passing the baton. It's about being a transformational leader. A good leader understands when it's time to pass the baton because a transformational leader certainly helps shape, build, and other leaders. And I pride myself on leading with integrity. And what I'm going to do here is make sure that decisions that are being made are inclusive and not exclusive and making sure that I treat people with all, all people with dignity and respect. And that's why I'm running, and that's what I'm going to bring to the table. Objective thinking and a new energy that's needed for this pivotal point that we're in, in District 4. Thank you.
All right, and thank you to both of our candidates. All right, we're going to go ahead and jump into questions now. The first one is going to go to Yolanda. And we want to know, of course, you're currently serving on City Council. Why are you running again?
I'm running to finish the job that I've started. Well, honestly, it will never be finished. But before I ran, like I said, seven days a week. So recently, on terms of transportation, we have increased five bus routes to 15-minute frequencies, and that just happened within the last couple of years under my stewardship. We have also have more fixed routes. We have routes to the northeast hospitals, and we also have a route that's starting in July from the airport, first time ever. Every city comes down, they go, "Why don't you have a bus route from the airport to downtown?" Well, guess what? Now we're going to have it. I wanted to make sure we got our fair share of infrastructure, and I did. We have unprecedented amounts of road building sidewalks. We have a lot of the bridges at I-25 in Circle and a bridge by my house off of Airport Road in Spring Creek. That was a state bridge that now is going to be a pedestrian bridge that's well-lit and able to manage so you can get to those retail spaces and to the bus stops. So it's just, I'm running to continue this. It's, I am not a person that just starts something and does it for a year and then moves on. No, I am committed. I committed it to four years, and I am committed to keep on on City Council representing my community for another four years.
Thank you, Yolanda. Regina, next question to you. What are your priorities running for City Council?
Well, my main priority is what I just said in my introduction, is making sure that my constituents have a much better quality of life, which is multifaceted because it has everything to do with public infrastructure, public transportation, and it has everything to do with healthy neighborhoods, clean and safe neighborhoods. And like I said in the beginning, we're in a pivotal moment, and it's very important that there's consistency in decision-making for the good of all people in our community. And I'm about inclusivity and not just being exclusive to just a certain population of people. So I'm running because it's necessary for me to be in this position and have a seat at the table that's a strong, collaborative, transparent, more inclusive voice that's making decisions for the people that they really, truly care about because I care about my community. And having just a new energy and a new perspective in that objective thinking is going to be very important in order for us to get to the next level that we need to be at as a community. And sitting on the school board, I have set a phenomenal tone for the next leader that will maybe take my place. So it's about passing a baton for me. It's not giving up. It's passing the baton and understanding when you need to go to that next level of leadership. And it's very honorable to have my community to call on my voice, so that's why I'm in this race. Thank you.
All right, next question is for Yolanda. What do you think are the greatest challenges facing District 4?
We have a lot of challenges, and I'm going to tell you what's really highlighted that. It's COVID-19. We have had disparities in this, my district, forever, for the last three decades. And so we have an heat island here that's six to eight degrees hotter than the rest of the city. We have food deserts. We, until recently, we had a medical desert. For the first time ever, under my leadership in 2019, we received a medical clinic, Peak Vista, in 80916. There had never been one there. So we're facing that we need that care. So under COVID, the disparities have really been highlighted in terms of unemployment, in terms of accessibility, getting to and from jobs in grocery stores. And so there's a lot to work on. Those are, there's going to be some big challenges to keep our kids healthy, that they have parks to go to, that we keep, I know people don't understand, tree canopies are extremely important in cooling down an area and to provide a safe and clean environment. So we have some challenges to look forward, to look forward to. No, I'm not going to say that, but we, but we do have the tools. And I think through my experience through the last four years, I've gathered the tools and the networks to make it happen and to progress in a more positive direction.
Regina, next question to you. What can be done to make our city government more inclusive?
Well, first, I'll just say this. As we all know, the City Council currently does not reflect what our community actually looks like. So voting me in the seat could start with that inclusivity. However, outside of that, just being more inclusive and transparent in the decision-making process is being more intentional on making sure that community is actually aware of the decisions that they're making and why they're making the decisions. But with me at the table, the community will know why the decisions are being made, when and how they are being made, and everything that it entails. Because I believe when community is, has more of an involvement, that's when you get the most buy-in, when people have a clear, concise understanding of what's going on. And my body of work clearly validates the stamina and energy that I'll bring to the table as well as being an objective thinker. Thank you.
All right, this next question is for both of you, but we'll start with Yolanda for this one. How is the southeast progressing with affordable housing and what improvements are needed? You have a couple of minutes.
So right now, we have like four projects that I can name right now. We have Academy Heights, which is an affordable housing project. We also have the Village at Solid Rock, which is in process for affordable housing. We also have Colitis, which is also an urban renewal authority project, which is on top of that, that will be providing a community relationship type of housing, affordable housing. And we also are looking at another urban renewal authority project. It will be at the Mission Trace Center, which will be universal housing to include, you know, people with disabilities where it's completely accessible. So we have some projects going on. Do we need to do a lot more? We do. We do have a lot more to do. However, I want to really emphasize that I think it's important that southeast be sure that we are able to have our people in homes. But we also need to make sure that affordable housing is throughout the entire city. In new development, I suggest that we put a percentage, a small percentage, so that for low-income and affordable housing in all new developments going up through the entire Colorado Springs, because that way that we don't get saturated in one area, that it be dispersed throughout the entire city. But doing that, I'm really proud of the work that we've done throughout the city and especially in southeast Colorado Springs in moving that affordable housing forward.
All right, Regina, southeast progressing with affordable housing and what improvements are needed?
So it's hard for me to use progression in the same sentence as like lack. Like, we know that there is a lack of affordable housing within District 4, and I believe this is really a citywide issue, but there is, it's more prominent in District 4. So just for me, from my own perspective, I am almost 50, and I am not a homeowner because of the decisions that me and my husband had to make for the best interest of our family. So we need more access for people to have affordable housing. And this is a collaborative work. It most certainly is. But for me, I believe that the bottom line is funding. Where do we access that funding to be able to continue these projects on an even greater level than they have started? Because as Yolanda stated, there are some projects that are happening under her leadership, and those are all phenomenal things. But we can always be doing something different, something better to, like I spoke of, propel us to that next level. So I get it. Affordable housing is necessary, but what does that look like? Everything, at the end of the day, comes down to collaboration and funding, which will provide access for affordable housing for us. But we are in a momentum where there are projects, like I said, but we need to be doing more. And what does that more look like? It looks like community working together with all the initiatives that are sparking up. One person doesn't have the answer, clearly. If one person had the answer, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, and we wouldn't see the lack that we're having. So doing this work together and collaborating with a clear understanding of what it should look like for community to be able to afford a house and not be pushed out of the community is the work that's the most important for me.
Thank you, Regina. So the next question, Regina, we'll have you start, but Yolanda, please follow and answer as well. Where do you stand on the issue of policing and public safety as well as working with LITAC, the Law Enforcement Transparency and Accountability Commission?
Okay, so because I'm a real person, I just have to be real, and I think people honor and respect that piece of being authentic and true to who I am. I can speak a lot on police transparency, I'm sorry, police accountability and all these different things because I have been a victim of the system. I've been a part of the unjust system. There's two different systems, clearly. There's a white system, and there's a black system. And I've experienced what it's like to be wrongfully convicted of a crime that I didn't commit, and so I get it. And as far as police accountability, we all know we lost Devon Bailey unnecessarily. It didn't have to happen. It was very unethical policing with a lack of accountability. And the LITAC committee that's in place right now, I feel like most of the residents do, is it was just a Band-Aid to kind of help heal the wound and keep people quiet. So I'm here to advocate and push for an oversight committee. Police should not be policing themselves, and they should be held accountable for unethical policing because, like I said, I know what it feels like. I've been there. And no parent should have to bury their child because of unethical policing. So we're going to have to do much better than a LITAC committee because right now, that's what it is. It's just the police policing themselves. So it's not really what the community wants nor what the community needs. It was just to kind of shush the community. But what we need, and what I will push for and advocate for strongly, is an oversight committee that's made up of different community members outside of the police. So like I said, that's one of my main focuses. As you can see, my energy shifted. I'm very passionate about that because I know what it feels like to be in a system that is unjust. And that's why I need a seat at the table to change that because there's still some things happening under the current representation that should not be happening, and it's not okay. So I see you, community. I got you. Thank you for the question.
Yolanda, same question to you.
So I'm going to go back to when Devon Bailey was shot and killed. The council and the mayor really didn't know what to do with that. It was new and foreign to them, being a woman of color and having three older brothers who had guns to their heads, didn't really understand the situation. And so there is a stress between, a tension between police and community. There's no doubt about that. And when we spoke about it at City Council and when many, like at least 30 people, very frustrated and angered about, and justly so, about what happened with Devon Bailey, there was a move on council to just only have three people be able to speak. And I said, "Oh, no. This is the people's house, and anyone who wants to speak will speak. They will have their three minutes." And so based on that, it went forward, and everyone there gave, spoke, said how they felt. And after that, it was, I became very targeted on council because of my stance after that. But as things shaped up and we were, we didn't even look at LITAC until George Floyd was murdered. And at that time, the community had enough, and I began to speak out. And in many of the votes, it was 8-1, 8-1. I did not want LITAC at the time because I thought it was just window dressing, a committee, advisory committee, and it needed more teeth. Since then, LITAC, the people that have been on LITAC are really committed. A lot of them belong in, from our community. They are from our community, at least four of the members. And one of the members said, "One of our recommendations might actually be having an oversight committee." So I am looking at it. I've made sure that I'm the liaison on this and to do reform and to make sure the community and police are working together.
All right, next question. How can the southeast transportation infrastructure be improved through a City Council seat? Yolanda, we'll start with you.
Well, like I said, before I came on, I mean, there was not very much happening in terms of transportation. And the truth is, we in the southeast use public transportation more than any other area of town. That being said, we need to get to other areas of town. So since that, we've increased our frequency immensely. But not only that, I mean, there were places where there were no benches, there wasn't a shelter, and there was, you just waited out there in the rain. So I've been working on that. We've increased it, you know, I said, frequency, five and five bus routes. And we are continuing to look at that throughout the city. And so it plays an enormous role because, like, I always tease it, in the northeast side of town, everybody has a car, even the two-year-old. And here, there may be only one family member that will have a vehicle, and the rest of them need to, either they're walking it or they're taking bus transportation. I feel like I've really been the champion in this area, continue to be. And I've been able to collaborate with my fellow council members and the mayor to get that funding for transit, and it keeps increasing every year.
Regina?
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. How can the southeast transportation infrastructure be improved through a City Council seat?
So this is not even going to take me long. It's clearly about collaboration, and we know what's needed. Like, one person isn't the only person that knows what's needed. But in order to get that, you have to be able to collaborate and work with other people. Like, we know that we need more frequency and routes, especially for those people who work the overnight shift. They need access to that transportation as well. Many people want to see perhaps a light rail from Colorado Springs to Denver because they have to commute, right? So that's taken money away. That would help alleviate some of the monies that is taken away from the people that are currently having to drive there, which, in saying that, we need to broaden and widen our roads and our streets, help with congestion, and all these things are going to clearly happen by working with the people in the city that specialize in this work. I can go to community and say, "Hey, what do you see? What do we need?" I know what I need. I know what I can see, and I know what needs to happen. So just taking that voice to the table and advocating for those things, more frequency and routes. She's done a great job at that. She really has. This is nothing even personal. I'm not here to knock the work that has been done because I've already acknowledged that it was, it has been a great work, and I even thanked her for her work because it's outstanding. But just moving to that next level, it takes a new energy and a new voice at times and an objective thinker, and we need a more robust public transportation system, and that's clearly been acknowledged by everyone. So I'm not here to reinvent the wheel nor even try to make up something, but just be more creative and enhancing the system that's currently in place. Thank you for the question.
All right, Regina, back to you, and then Yolanda, please follow as well. What should City Council implement to address the impacts of COVID-19?
So what I think, as a small business owner myself, what I think City Council could be implementing is deferring certain costs and expenses to small businesses because clearly we have all seen the impact that it's had. Many of our small businesses has had to close their doors. My business has tremendously been impacted by this pandemic. So I believe that the city could be doing more to provide access and empower these small businesses, like I said, defer certain costs, like perhaps, for example, utility costs, different tax incentives, so that these people can keep the doors open, keep their businesses running, keep their employees employed so that their employees can still continue to feed their families. And the application processes in terms of these grants, I've applied for several grants myself, y'all, so I get it. It's more exclusive than inclusive. That's why I need a seat at the table, to make sure that these decisions and opportunities are more inclusive and not exclusive, because it's tough for me as a small business as well. So I believe the city could be doing more in terms of deferring certain costs to keep the doors open of our small businesses that has been impacted. And of course, for the people who want and need the vaccine, working with the county to make sure that there's still access for people who want to get the shot. to make sure that there's still access for people who want to get the shot and bring more education around the shot, for people to even feel comfortable to get the vaccine. Thank you.
In December, I hosted a COVID-19 summit because a lot of people, from children to moms to dads, were really suffering from the effects of COVID and having mental health issues. So in this, through the, with the GRIP program, we designed a seat at the table, a panel for people to come and show, talk about the training and what people are going through. And so after that panel discussion, there were, it went up in 80910, the involvement to be coached and trained how to deal with the effects of the pandemic went up by 94%. In 80916, in how to train and how to deal with the pandemic, it went up by 300% participation. I know how this pandemic has just floored families, especially the kids going to school and mothers having to, and dads having to school at home. It's been affected in every way. And we've given a lot of breaks to, we took 2% off the city for taxes for small businesses. There's a lot of programs and grants and now we are destined, now going to receive from the American Rescue Act, another $76, a million dollars that are going to come into the city. And you can rest assured, it will go for COVID relief and for small businesses and for families and especially those areas here in the Southeast.
All right, and Yolanda, we'll start with you for this question and then Regina will follow. How comfortable are you at the board of director role and responsibility with the Colorado Springs Utilities? And what are the greatest challenges facing Colorado Springs Utilities?
It's me? Okay. That's a really good question because being a board of the director of the utility is another animal. It is a corporation. It's a billion-dollar budget. And so with the four years, it is a steep learning curve. You have to be in it. It's not something you want to be in there a year and then take off. It's a steep learning curve to make all those connections, to have the understanding. And so with some of the things that we're looking at are the gas volatility. You know, we experienced the Valentine Freeze and we're working with the, you know, the gas volatility and how that affects the customer rate and also with the electric. But one of the things that I'm really concerned about is water shortage. We're in a drought. I mean, doesn't seem like it recently, but we are in a drought. And we have to look in the future to see how we are going to provide that drinking water and that water for the community to come. We're heading up on a half a million people. So those are some of the concerns we have and an expansion of the city and utilities going to expand with it and providing the necessary services. We are a forced service utility, municipally owned, and that's gas, water, wastewater, and electric. And so right now, under the leadership of Iran Benjamin, he is like combining the forced service together to make sure that we are being as efficient as possible. And I think we're on the right path. As we did close down Drake, no longer, it will be closed down by 2023. And that's just a great path forward in moving toward renewables for utilities.
To answer the question, I'm very comfortable with being a board of utilities member because I'm going to do exactly what the current nine members are doing right now. They're reading, they're studying, they're researching, and they're consulting with the experts for recommendations on what to do best for our city. There's a learning curve to everything you do. You don't just go on a job and know everything about the job the first day. We're all different levels of learners. I can read, I can write, and I certainly can comprehend. So like I said, I'm going to do the same thing the current nine members are doing. They're not doing anything different than what I would have to do, coming on, reading, studying, consulting with the experts. The issue is, one of the main issues is diversifying the way we do use energy. We know that's an issue. And we do know that we want to make sure that there is not a lack of water. And most of all, we want to make sure that we can keep the rates low for our community members. So I'm very comfortable with being a board of directors for Colorado Springs Utilities, very comfortable.
All right, Regina, we'll have you take this and then Yolanda to follow. What's your approach to collaboration with those you may not necessarily agree with?
That's easy. I don't even have to give a long drawn out answer. The best process in order to make the best decisions that are equitable for all people is respecting the perspectives straight across the board and being able to work straight across the aisle with those that may feel differently than what we do. So being a member, a nine-member board is basically what the city council is. You have to work together. Like it's not an option to not work with the people that you sit on a council with. So I'm all about collaboration. I'm a very collaborative voice, a collaborative leader, because we make the best decisions together. So I don't have any issues with working with people that think differently than me because I do it every day. I do it all the time. I do it on the school board. We don't all, as a board, think the same, but we have the same goal, which is to set our students up for successful education. So in terms of city council, we need to set our community up to have the best quality of life that we can possibly make happen at the city council level, which is going to take collaboration. So I don't have any issues with different perspectives and working straight across the aisles with everyone.
Yolanda, same question.
It is really important to develop those relationships and not even just city council, let's just say our constituents. My constituents here in Southeast have varying views of how to proceed and what they would like to see. There's different views depending on what the issue is and also on council. And so I'm going to say that I'm the only person of color on council. I'm a woman and I'm really afraid that I may be the only woman on council. It's very male-dominated and, and for the first time ever, it's this historic way, I'm the only person that served with a disability. So I'm at the intersection of three dynamics. And so I come from a perspective of a woman, of a woman of color and of a woman with a disability. And that perspective doesn't match up a lot of the other perspectives of, you know, of privilege, to be honest. And so, but that doesn't mean that I will stand my ground. I will, I've heard my, the voices from my constituents and it's particular issues of, you know, diversity in terms of what happened with police shooting, but also in terms of homelessness, in terms of all the trash around. And I stick to my guns, but that, and we have spirited conversations. But that doesn't mean that I don't collaborate. That means that we collaborate in such a way that our voices are being heard. And the city council has worked really well. The city council has the highest, the last two city councils that I've been on, including this, have the highest ratings that they ever had through the, through the rest of the prior years. And so it's, we're doing really a great job, this council is. It's really important that we be able to maintain that consistency. We work well with each other. We work well with the mayor. We work well with the chamber. We work well with the community, with RISE and the different areas. So it's important to continue collaborating in that way.
And we'll start with Yolanda for this one. Why are you the most qualified for this seat and what are you the most excited for?
I am really excited about what's been accomplished. I'm actually blown away that to think that never in the history of Colorado Springs, that there's never been an urban renewal authority project. It's unbelievable to me that now, and even though I fought for it and I pounded the pavement, that now we're going to have to. It's just, and what makes, I believe we're all qualified if we've decided to run and we're qualified. But I have the passion. I have the passion for it. It's more than just a job and it's certainly a position I wouldn't leave within a year and a half. This is what I am committed to. I'm qualified because I have shown results. You know, results matter. So I've shown results in the road construction. I've shown results in bus, in robust transit system. I've shown results in economic development. I have shown results in the park. With the RISE leadership, we worked on one end, but being on city council, I was able to work with Karen Palace from the park to say, hey, Venezia looks really nice and stuff, but we want something down here. And we got it. We are going to have a 13-acre park, $9 million investment, state-of-the-art in the heart of Southeast. I have shown results and I would like to continue that momentum and be able to, if the persons elect me, and to show more results for the people, for the constituents. Because I've heard your voices. You've spoken loud and clear and I've taken that to the dais and made those votes for you.
Same question? So my body of work clearly shows how dedicated and focused and in tune with the community that I am. And I would say that I'm the best candidate right now because of the objective thinking and the new energy that must come for us to propel to the next level. I ran for school board because it was important to me to set all of our students up for success. It was very important. And now that I've worked with the families and the students and heard the extensions of issues outside of education, I'm planning to bring that same level of energy, tenacity, drive and passion that I have for not only my students and current families right now, but now my constituents. There's more work that I know that I was called to do, which is why I'm in this work. I was purposed to lead and born to lead, to do this work. And I'm very passionate about continuing to move my community forward. I'm about forward thinking. I'm about collaboration. And my body of work and track record has proven that I can get results also. Again, I say this work is always bigger than one person and I'm here to advocate in a much stronger, louder and consistent voice because I'm a pretty tough chick myself too, y'all. I'm not no little pushover. And the only vote you will see me vote on, on city council is the vote that's in the best interest of my constituents in District Four. So I'm here to collaborate, to lean in on my community because I don't have all the answers. We're in this work together because we're better together. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. To start and then Yolanda, what is a mistake that you've made and how have you corrected it?
So a mistake I made was when I was younger, I didn't take education serious enough. And now I'm in the business of education. I'm an advocate for education because now I understand in my more seasoned years how important it really is. So I made the mistake of not going to college because education is key. Education is power and it's very vital to navigate in this world. I'm currently working on my doctoral degree. I'm almost 50, but I'll be Dr. Regina English before I turn 50. So that's how I corrected it. I went back to school in my more seasoned years because it's better late than never. So that was one of the mistakes I made when I was young and you just wanted to have fun and, you know, doing my thing, not taking education as serious as I could have. But like I said, it's better late than never and you can always make a wrong right and that's what I've done. And I'm proud because I believe in modeling the behaviors that I want to see. I can't, you know, drill education and I'm not modeling those behaviors. So that's, it's very important to me. I'm very passionate about it. And I will continue the work of being an advocate for education and advocate for my community at the city level. Like the work I'm doing will not stop. It will enhance. So any capacity of leadership that I'm in, in the city that I'm moving in, it's always going to be geared towards moving community forward with the forward thinking.
Same question to you, Yolanda.
Okay, so I'm going to say I've made lots of mistakes. I'm a regular human being that, but you know what they say about mistakes? They're unplanned learning experiences. So I'm filled with that. But one of the things that I'm going to think, point to is my first run. My first run in 2015 for office, I had the passion and I had the desire to make things better in my district, but I didn't educate myself on how to do that. And so when I ran, I just ran on what I thought you did to run as a, as a city council person. I didn't have a campaign. I didn't have a manager. I did, I didn't know what I was doing. I did a bunch of flyers and I went to every house I could walk to and left a flower, a flyer there. And then after I was halfway through the process, I was like, wow, I really needed to prepare myself for running. And so after that experience, I thought, okay, I am going to do something because I really want to serve my community. I really, I've heard their voices. I want to be able to serve them. So I took a candidate class called Emerge Colorado and I learned and I went to every class. I raised my hand first to do every exercise, every event that we could possibly do. And then through that process, I learned too that when I first ran, the first time, I wanted to run like I was a sighted person, like I could see things. I was getting all these questionnaires and I was like, I didn't know what to do. I needed help, right? And so going through this program and learning how to be a candidate and how to move forward, it really supported me. And therefore I was able to run a very successful campaign in '27 and therefore get elected. So that's how I fixed that mistake. But I also call it an unlearned, learning experience.
All right. Now kind of on the opposite end of that spectrum, and this will be for both of you. We'll start with Yolanda. What is your proudest achievement?
I think I keep saying that, but I'm so excited about these urban renewal projects because when you look at an urban renewal project, it is, let's take Mission Trace for the, right now as the example. That is going to include retail, services, a hub, affordable housing, connections like a sidewalk, connections and safe bridges across Hancock Expressway to the trails and open space. I mean, that, that starts with $15 million. That's what an urban renewal project does. It's an investment of $15 million. And that project, once it's completed, will be, bring to our district over $100 million. That is so exciting and I'm so proud of that. I'm very proud of the Circle Bridge over I-25. And the reason is because I've worked with the Harrison School District and I worked with the kids from Harrison, the seniors, the juniors and seniors, and they became the ambassadors for that project. And they went out into their own homes and to the community and said, hey, what do you, this bridge is going to be rebuilt, replaced. What do you, what do you want it to look like? And the kids came back with all the feedback from the community and the kids gave their own feedback. And these kids are, now they're looking into being engineering, into communication. And they gave the feedback and they, they didn't really understand how dangerous that bridge was until they started to walk it and look at it and design it. So the kids, one of the things they've decided, they are going to have a mural, they're going to have art throughout that bridge. So they're bringing that. So I'm so proud of that. And it was so wonderful to have them come forward. And one of the young women saying, you know, when I grow, get, grow up and get married, I'm going to bring my kids here and I'm going to say, mom helped build that bridge. Here we have a 16-year-old thinking about her legacy. And so I can be no prouder than that when the mayor and I signed letters of recommendation for them to go into college or to, into jobs. It was so exciting and I'm very, very proud of that as well.
Repeat the question? I'd like to listen, so I kind of.
What is your proudest achievement?
So my proudest achievement is So my proudest achievement is being a mom. Being a mom is my most proudest achievement. I've raised three kings and two queens. And these are phenomenal young men and women that are now able to give back to society in a meaningful way because of the values I raised them with from birth. And that's one of my most proudest achievements, along with being a grandmother of nine. Now I have an opportunity to raise more phenomenal human beings to give back to society in a meaningful way. And I'm also very proud of being, coming the woman that I am today. I feel like I'm in my process of evolution, and I continue to evolve as I go to those next levels of leadership. Like, I am just in awe of myself and in the positions that I'm in and the opportunities and the tables that I have been invited to because of the woman that I am today. So just to end that note, just honestly, really, the most proudest achievement is being a mom in a glamour, y'all, a glamour of nine, just helping raise more valuable human beings to give back to society in a meaningful way.
Thank you, ladies. So we have people joining us live stream. So we're just going to take one of those questions before we get to our closing and our last question. So this comes from a community member that wants to talk about businesses reopening. On a municipal level, how can council facilitate financial health for citizens of the Pike Peak region? Yolanda, you want to kick it off, and then Regina?
Sure. Right now, there are a lot of initiatives going forward. There's grants, people that have met the, we're in yellow right now, right? There's a code for everything. I don't know the number. And, you know, that have met the five-star requirement. These businesses are able to operate like in blue star. But as more and more people are getting the vaccines and people continue to social distance and wear mask, we will see these businesses open more and more. But there's a lot of initiatives, not only through city council, but with the county commissioners and with the state that are providing the necessary equipment, necessary services to make sure that businesses do open. Like I said, the city took off a 2% tax so that businesses didn't have to pay for that. I know. So I think there's a lot of initiatives, especially, you know, with the COVID money. Like I said, it's $76 million to the city. And the businesses are our backbone. But the toughest hit, businesses that were hit were the hotels, the lodgers, and automobile. And that's even coming back. And what we've done as a city is really worked on that. And Southwest is here, and it's been phenomenal, the amount of people that are coming and going. And so once we get the lodgers and automobile tax, because in other areas, in terms of Amazon and stuff, retail-wise, we didn't dip that much. And so with fixing those businesses and putting people back to work, we will be able to come back.
I believe three things are important: opportunity, resource, and access. And we all need that, whether we're a small business, a large business, or a community member. We need those three things to be able to function. And I think within this whole process, the most important thing is opening up in a safe and meaningful way so we don't have to shut back down again and everybody will just go back to being disgruntled or, you know, uneasy and not peaceful. So we need to do this smart. I know there's some anxiety, and we want things to clearly open back up because there has impacted us as a city, not just a small group of people, but as a city, we've been impacted. And I know there is grant money and fundings that the city does have access to. But I believe that the city should be more intentional on going after those, as many funds, much funds as we can to get our economy back fluid and thriving in an even much better position in a way that we were prior to this pandemic. So this is our opportunity to help spearhead and drive our economy, our local-level economy into a better place. But it should happen in a safe way and in a meaningful way. And like I said, the city should just be more intentional on going after those fundings to help with the different organizations and businesses and collaborate with the initiatives that have come about through this whole opportunity because it's an opportunity, and that's how we need to look at it, an opportunity for us to do better as a city.
Thank you, ladies. So this last question, this is our last one. We're going to give you guys about a minute, minute and a half due to time, and then we'll wrap it up. So what made you get into government? Yolanda, we'll start with you.
So government is what runs, what, we are government. Everybody that pays taxes is government. But it's really important to have leaders in government that reflect a wide variety of people. That's where decisions are being made. And I wanted to be able to make those decisions in terms of ordinances, you know, making the laws, making the policies to affect a wide array of people. So this is work that takes, it takes time. Government is important, and it needs to be well-run and fair and just and equitable. And so I look forward, it's important, since it's a minute and a half, I find myself rushing it. I think it's really clear, like, for me, I love being a public servant and serving my community and the entire Colorado Springs community is so important. This is not a stepping stone for me. This is my calling. This is something that I did not know that I was preparing to do all my life. And I just look for the opportunity from all of you to make sure that I'm re-elected so that I can serve you to my greatest capacity. And with that being said, I am Yolanda Avila. Please go to my website at yolandaavilaforcitycouncil. And it's been a pleasure to be with all of you here today.
So I would say I never in a million years would have even thought that I would be in this particular arena. Because you have, you have to have a thick skin to be in this arena because people that are uninformed are going to come at you hard, thinking that you have all the answers. This is not about having all the answers. This is about wanting to impact change in a meaningful way, which is something that you cannot do solely by yourself. And what really propelled me forward, the pivotal moment for me, which really got me involved in government, was completing my master's in public administration and understanding how government works and how the different processes and why is this happening? Why is this not happening? And just understanding the role of government. Do I know everything about government? Absolutely not. It's a work in process. But that's when I made the decision to say, where can I most effectively utilize my master's in public administration that I happened to be completing when I got in the at-large race in 2019, which got me almost 20,000 votes? And no one knew me in that realm. So it was an honor to even have that many people know and believe in my leadership. And it tells me that the city of Colorado Springs is certainly ready for change. And so I just thank you for the opportunity to serve you. A vote for me is a vote for you. Supporting me is supporting you. You can go to my website, reginaenglish.com, because we're better together.
All right. And a big thank you to both of our candidates here today, Yolanda Avila and Regina English. Thank you so much for your time. We're unfortunately getting to the end of our time here today. But we do want to express our gratitude to the Colorado Springs Business Journal, Colorado Springs Independent, and Southeast Express for partnering with us for today's forum. If you'd like more information, you can always head to koaa.com. That includes election information. If you haven't received your ballot, there's contact information for the city clerk's website as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you to KOAA. Thank you to My Black Colorado, the founders of Chinook Center. Thank you for having us. Good luck to you guys. I love hearing your stories and your passion. A couple things. Stay tuned to me and Allison. We'll be here monthly for the Coffee Connect with different Southeast events that are happening. You can find that on southeastexpress.org. And please join us tomorrow for our Colorado Springs Business Journal Election Security Panel. We have the Secretary of State joining us from noon to 1:00 tomorrow. That's on csbj.com. And then Wednesday, May 26th at noon, Allison and I'll be here talking about Southeast and healthcare. And we'll be back Wednesday, May 28th with our Southeast City Council, talking about Southeast business. I'm Patrice Ravenscroft, associate publisher of Southeast Express. Thank you to KOAA, and we'll see you guys next time.